More to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. The Friday is a public comment. After members have spoken, the chair may afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a full list of all public commentators, I will call them each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. A public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. All right. And. Okay, we'll start off with public comments. The board would like to hear public comments. If there is further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they're able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. And so we will start and see if there are any public comments from within the room this evening. Very good. And I will now see if there are any public comments from those joining us online. All right, very good. And then because this is the order it's presented to me, if everyone could please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item four, which is our consent consent agenda. We have the free annual concert from library in Royal Park. And did we have the ABCC license? I'm assuming we did not otherwise.
Did not receive.
All right, so only item A for the consent agenda. Any questions? I want to take a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda item A as presented, contingent upon adherence to all federal state and local public health and safety guidelines and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Hi Jean, I didn't see you there. Do you want to give us an overview of the upcoming concert? Okay, I'm sure it'll be great. All right, then all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Fantastic. All right, item five, we have a poll petition. This is for a relocation of a pole on Sudbury Street. Mr. Town administration, would you like to give the details here?
So just for the awareness in the public, maybe the jog memory. So the pole in front of the new fire station on Sudbury, across from St. Bridges, is is just sort of, it's pretty close to the edge of the street. So the pole goes back seventeen. This has been sort of advocated by the town, the fire department, representative of his office. So representatives moving through this, so it's very minimal that this is needed in public area. It's more for the board's awareness and endorsement unless you have opposition to it, but we per the diagram, it's seventeen feet back. So I know I'm such a divin', and I don't think any of the departments do. I think this is something we're looking forward to.
Any questions on the pole or the relocation? All right, I want to entertain a motion.
Actually, one comment. It looks like the pole's already been put up.
That sounds like EverSource. So one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing. That's that's EverSource.
Yeah.
Probably because they know this isn't a hearing, but I won't give them that much credit.
And then and then on similar vein, but unrelated to the pole itself. I know that the parish is still hoping to have the handicapped spots identified.
Right, I understand. And I've been talking with the fire chief and the local authorities.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, now I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve a grant of location to relocate one pole ninety-one slash nine A and install one anchor guy to allow for fire trucks to make right turns on Sudbury Street in Maynard. The petition and plan is being presented by the by the N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, very good. There you go. Sorry, I was saying you can come up because you're next. We'll now move on to item six, which is a public hearing. So I'll read the notice here. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen P M at Town Hall Room two oh one, one ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, oh one seven five four, to consider the application for a new section twelve restaurant, all alcoholic beverages license for Hucky Hucky LLC, doing business as Smack Noodle Manager, Harry Kong Kong the Corn at forty-five forty-seven Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts. Hybrid opt-in attendance via Zoom using the Actus instructions on the posted agenda to be found at www dot town of Maynard dash M A dot gov. Copy of application is on file in the office of the select board. All right, so.
Mr. Chair also wants to get joined by Mr. Connell, who I assume is your attorney. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Connell. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Attorney John Canout for the applicant, Hucky Hucky LLC, and with us should be in person, Harry Kognicorn.
Yes, very good.
All right.
All right. Mr. Town administration.
So I was that I was doing introductions, but I think we all are there with Snack Noodle, which is wonderful, but I deserve the last.
I was just gonna have you tee up, tee up, and tell us what you want to do.
Yes. You know, I'm not there present, so I will start and then I will invite any questions to either the license here myself, if that's okay.
Go for it.
All right, great. This is an application for an all alcoholic beverage license. Smack Noodle has been at this location for approximately four or five years. It's an Asian fusion concept. It's relatively small. It's nineteen seating capacity inside, ten outside. We are applying for an all alcoholic beverage license as many of our customers over the years have asked for alcoholic beverages, which we don't serve. We think there's a public need for it. The customers have especially requested sake, which technically can fall under all alcoholic beverage license. So that's the reason for the all alcoholic beverage license application. Mister Harry Kognicorn is here. He's the proposed manager of record. He's a U.S. citizen. He has experience in the industry of serving alcoholic beverages. He was a waiter at a restaurant that did so for a few years, a couple of years ago. He's here to answer any questions. We would very much like to have this license so we can serve the customers as they request.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Yeah. Say everything that I want to say, but I mean, okay. I'm seeing the open as Smack Noodle, right? I got maybe customer asking more, asking me for some beer, some, yeah. I went home, but I mean, yeah, we're not. Okay, but after we opened the sushi, we got many requests about the beer also gave, and I think now it's the good time.
I don't, I don't issue, but I don't think that's an issue, so.
I'll open up the questions from the board. Good. Justine? David?
I'm looking at the map of not the map, but the interior diagram, the ground. Is there going to be a bar set up or is it just going to be alcohol behind a counter?
No, because we just say the color line is like a like a ice machine and they're like a cooler, but I mean, we're not gonna say all like a full alcohol. We just say only like a beer and sake.
Okay, so no beer, no wine, no?
Like a beer, beer and sake, no, no mixed beer.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it's really a very small amount of alcohol.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what my understanding, that's that's the plan, but they would have a license to do that if they wanted to.
Yeah, I'm wondering though, if there was an expansion, if there needs to be a re-filing in any way, given that you're obligated to have a ground floor plan that establishes where the alcohol is going to be, et cetera. And I don't know if that's included on this because right now it's just a very small amount of alcohol. Wouldn't even require that really. Something to think about, should there be a need to expand or a desire to expand? It's right now, right now. Go ahead, go ahead, counsel.
I'm sorry. I hate interrupting anybody.
No, no, don't worry about it. I get interrupted all the time.
Yeah. Yes.
Please go ahead.
Any future requests to expand the premise would obviously have to come before this board with no with notice to a butters and so forth. And I don't know for sure, but I don't believe there's any available room to expand. I don't think that's the plan.
Yeah, okay. And all, yeah, because all I see on here is the back, the back bar cooler. So if there's going to be any additional alcohol, it would require presumably more location. I don't know. Okay, as long as everybody's sort of on the same page.
Any other questions from the board before I open? Go ahead, Justine.
I just had a quick question. Actually, David, David made me think of it. So what about the outside seating? Because do do we need a separate license to? I know that we had to go back and forth with, you know, giving extended licenses for outdoor seat, outdoor seating through the ABCC by changing the footprint. Is that still something that we need to do or is that encompassed in this?
I, the application requests the license being out on the patio as well as the interior.
All right, I apologize. I missed that. I didn't see it on the on the diagram. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. But Greg, can you clarify?
Greg, yes, it's it's part of the application. Before before Megan left, I checked to make sure in case a situation like that came up. And she said that as long as we are, and I checked with the ABCC as well, as long as it's all listed as part of the original application, it's then to us, you know, to to do our normal outdoor dining and the liquor license itself is already taken care of.
Thank you. Perfect.
All right, any remaining questions from the board? All right, this is a public hearing, so I will now open it up to the public. Anybody from the public like to make a comment? All right, very good. One last call for anybody board or public to make a comment before I entertain a motion?
Yes, just to clarify the process because we had a recent process issue with a misunderstanding problem. Whatever they are, Avery's Tavern, Avery's.
To, Avery's doing, you're right.
That this approval will now move on. We're not approving a license. We're only approving the application, which will move on to the state level for approval by the ABCC. The ABCC presumably, counsel, if I'm wrong with this, just let me know. The ABCC presumably will approve it. Then they'll send it back to Maynard and we'll have to have another hearing where we issue the license. Correct?
That's not my understanding. I do quite a lot of this. Almost this is all I do nowadays. The when you approve it, if you approve it after a vote, it goes administratively to the ABCC for their review. In the old days, you know, five years ago, pre-COVID, that would take about four, five, six weeks at the latest. Nowadays, it can take eight, nine, ten weeks. But they administratively review everything. They don't rubber stamp it. They look at it. They look at the applicant's, you know, criminal background, if any, and all of the other issues and make sure all this paperwork is correct. There's no hearing at the ABCC. But if everything is in order, they will approve it and send it back to your board, at which point then your board would issue the license. There's no second hearing.
A second hearing, but there, I do believe there's a vote required.
You know what, Maynard, I'm I've never appeared in Maynard. I've appeared in two hundred towns in Massachusetts. I don't know what your particular procedure is, but in general, there's never a second hearing. I've never seen a second hearing after ABCC approves it. You may have some sort of internal meeting where you do things. I just don't know.
Yeah, we don't have a public hearing per se. It's just a formal vote to issue the license is what we've done tradition.
Right, and traditionally, traditionally, that's where the applicant goes in and has a check usually to pay for the annual fee and picks up his license. In the old days, he used to pick up a piece of paper and now a lot of municipalities email license.
I don't think we're that far off. I think what David's saying is there is another step after ABCC acceptance that the town will have to do, and we just want to make sure we're clear on that. So we'll work with you once we get to that point.
Okay.
All right. All right, one last chance for commentary before I entertain a motion. All right.
Move to accept and approve the section twelve restaurant, all alcoholic beverages license application for Hucky Hucky LLC, doing business at Smack Noodle at forty-five Main Street, operating the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thanks. Good luck.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It is seven thirty-two. Motion has been made in second development. Favor Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to item seven, we have a special permit for the Maynard Cultural Council for a summer concert series coming up three dates in July. And is somebody here to speak? Jenna is online.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I'm here and Greg Bogus and Rich Peppin are on as well. Greg or Rich, would either of you want to speak to it?
I will speak. I will speak to it.
Yeah, if you could just introduce yourself and you're from the cultural council.
Okay, my name is Richard Peppin. I'm from the Maynard Cultural Council and I live at fifteen Maple Court. And this this concert series was an idea we had to present a small groups of musicians, mostly acoustic, not very heavily amplified, to play on the patio of the Open Table building. And that's pretty much it, really. And if this works out, we hope to expand to eight maybe next year.
Eight dates?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Richard. So I'm part, I think part of what we're asking for is to be able to actually do this under the town's liability insurance. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
So that that's probably the the main ask. And the dates are, I'm not sure if they were afforded to you, but the seven thirteen, seven twenty and seven twenty-seven are the dates that we're looking for as long as the weather holds out. We all.
Greg, can you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Greg Bogus and I'm one of the cultural council members.
Thank you. Please continue.
And the the rain dates that we're actually looking for are eight, three, eight, twenty and eight, seventeen, in the event that there's inclement weather.
All right. Can I ask a question?
You can.
First off, given that it's private property, is this even?
So that's not clear. And I appreciate you bringing it up. As I, as I put the public content, Greg Olson and I actually discussed it. And how council by that we that the board does consider this action approving this special permit, but to your point, non-private property doesn't constitute, you know, otherwise, on the surface of what doesn't look like we would need a special permit. But is the town and the cultural council, the art town officials? So in that case, if there is a pretty safe assumption that our town's liability insurance would cover them either way. But no, I think, I think I I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I do trust town council. What they say, like, you probably make sure that this is publicly addressed, special permit by the board. Make sure it's all clear. But hey, Greg, can you speak to that anymore? Why they might advise that?
I think that really covered it. I, because I did some research with with Maya and as well as town council. And I think that yeah, I really got the same answer. They just advised. But we can always say, you know, we can always talk, tell town council, hey, do we want to take another look at that again, since it actually is a current non-private property? But that was just their recommendation. I would figure we might as well be more safe than sorry. So.
There's not, so myself and the staff, it seems even though there's, we have no opposition to this. And it seems like it's relatively low key to a degree. It's not, it's not going to be disruptive to the neighborhood, I don't believe. So I would endorse this. I think that's my recommendation.
Yeah, I generally don't have a problem. But as I think about, you know, that location and then there's a band playing, people sitting down presumably to watch.
Sure.
And one of the requirements from the police, sidewalk not being blocked. It becomes really kind of a close knit party. And then the proximity of the street becomes a concern from a public safety, but the police and fire know better than I. And they've indicated no concerns as long as the sidewalk and the fire and the sidewalk block. So public safety is always the number one issue for me. We have one of these issues. And consistency in the way that we approach it is the other, that we follow the rules for everybody the same way. So as long as we are doing those and following public safety guidelines, I don't have a problem.
So for the represent the cultural council, do you understand what you're referring to, that the the sidewalk needs to be pretty open?
One hundred percent. Yep, we totally understand. We will not spill, the activities will not spill out on the sidewalk. We also, I believe we discussed it with Open Table. And we are able to actually use, set it back a little bit further in the event that we, that, you know, that people do start to congregate, but that's not really the point of it. It's really just to add a little bit of ambiance to the downtown. So people may be scrolling by and looking and watching for a few minutes, but it's not really a concert per se. It's more just to to provide some, something different in the downtown area.
I mean, Pleasant Cafe is going to chip in because I think I get the most benefits.
Pleasant Cafe definitely will get some benefits. In fact, Linda Thayer has done a bit of legwork for us. She's actually reached out to a number of the different restaurants, Smack Noodle, Pleasant Cafe, as well as the liquor store, Thai Chili, and they're all for it. They, you know, it's just something to really make the downtown a little bit more lively during some of the, some of the nice season that we have.
Linda's here in the room, too.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Greg. Fourteenth Channel Street. This was, this is funded by a grant from it ultimately goes to Mayor Cultural District to receive the grant because it's a designated district. We'll keep those words straight. There is no, you know, there's no other funding. It's not coming out of taxes or anything like that. Only funded by the grant. And again, if you've been to husband and they have live music on their town hall. The reason Open Table was approached for this is because it's the largest funded that would keep up off the sidewalk. That was the reason.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the special permit for the Maynard Cultural Council for their summer concert series on July thirteenth, July twentieth and July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, from six o'clock P M to eight o'clock P M, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you. Quick question.
David, David first, go ahead.
Before the cultural council people leave, I noticed that we have some new signs that are up designating the cultural district downtown. Where did those come from? And the reason I bring that up is not that I'm in opposition at all. I think it's great. I noticed that's the same sign in, I believe, Sudbury or Concord, the exact same sign. It looks like it's a state issued sign. Is that what it is?
Hi, everyone. I can, I can speak to that. Janet Dargie, Cultural Council. They are state issued signs. They're signs that we have had, I believe, for a few years. Actually, they were sort of just found again and put up. Linda Thayer also led that charge coordinating with G P W to get those those hung and put up around town. So they are state issued. That's why it's similar branding to area towns.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
I think the state had four kind of different options. And so you'll see four variations. Do you go around the state and see the different cultural districts? So some will match ours and some will be in the other three options.
How about the locations where they are? I saw one on Acton slash Waltham Street, right over the bridge, near Jarmos, is it? Where else are they?
It's a scavenger.
Where? There's four of them?
So there's one across the street by the rail trail propping near Jimmy's on Main Street. One just over the bridge where you identified. One at the rail trail propping up on some propping some of the trees. But it comes from behind the actual shore.
Okay.
It's visible there. And then the fourth one is the wire.
Great. All right, Justine, we'll look for them while we formulate the boundaries as possible.
On us.
You have, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to double check. Do we need to approve the rain dates or is that just implied?
That's a great question. I recommend
in that, I processed ones where the rain dates were applied because they were part of the application, but we can definitely start adding them in the actual motion to.
I think if the motion said per application, it's kind of cleared up. So you can either say that, like as proposed, or you just add it.
And we already did the motion. Well, rain dates are in the application.
Well, I'm okay with it.
I think I'm okay.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to come back, like that they didn't have to come back again. So that's all.
Understanding among the board that the rain dates in the application are the rain dates for the concert. All right, very good. Any other comments for item seven before we move on? All right, good luck with the concert looking for, or not the non-concert, looking forward to the music series.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dates we just approved earlier today on August seventeenth, another concert at Memorial Park, which we don't have times for. Want to make sure we're not conflicting.
The library concert?
Yeah.
August seventeen, prop, free annual concert Memorial Park.
So the, so that's true. So the last raid they proposed, I guess, because the last, the last raid they proposed for the this open table one is on seventy, the same day that we just approved the regular training or comfortable library also. So it's on the same day. To, I guess, it's a point of perception, like, do we think that it's do we think it's going to be an issue having the acoustic or whatever the cultural council proposals from Open Table while we have a concert?
Yeah, I don't know what time the library.
That's ridiculous.
It's five thirty to seven thirty, David.
Not.
It does overlap because the, because the open table six to six to eight, you just said the other one on Memorial Park is still seven thirty.
Despite thirty. Yeah.
So there's, there's an hour and a half there. I think we could work out perhaps an alternative rain date for that one where with the cultural council.
Yeah, if it's all, if it's only the rain date, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Most of the rings. Right, if you get to be honest with me, then we are. All right. That's a good question.
Well, August seventeenth happens to be also my birthday. Date, if you know, that, ah, and then I said, wait, and we did something else on August seventeenth.
All right, we would ask the cultural council not to have the seventeenth for a rain date. What's that? On his birthday, correct? So he can. Yeah. Okay.
What day of the week is it? Thursday?
Yeah, birthday.
Yeah.
That's correct. All right. All right. I would like to move on to the planning board appointments. Is there any final commentary on the cultural council? Music series. All right. Moving on to item eight, we have two planning board appointments. We have one alternate, alternate member of consideration for a full-time member, and then we have an individual to come in to. Come in to the alternate role. So let's start with the alternate uh member. We have. Uh Annette Garab, Garabedean. Garabedians, my apologies, uh who has been serving as an alternate member. And is now um applying to become full member to um uh replace a vacancy. So do you wanna come up real briefly and uh? Explain your interest in uh jumping up to the full time position. Not the full time, but the full work.
We're finishing with the an ultimate, well, I think three years now. And um kind of acquired taste to. Into the planning and development manner, because only because I am really into um. Seeing the progression and I want to be involved in it. And since I'm going to be a full time, I'm gonna be living here full time. So right now I'm building this local home. So I'm planning to be a very long time and help man it progress into something wonderful.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Annette? David?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. I think we're we're good there. Um. Let's do. Let's hear from the um applicant for the alternate member in that case, uh Jeff Black, who is joining us online. Good evening.
Good evening. How's it going?
Uh doing well. Could you just introduce yourself briefly and then explain what your interest in the role is?
Yeah, uh so Jeff Black, I live on uh ninety nine Acton Street. Um so I've lived in town for about three years now. I spent the last two and a half years, maybe it was on the Conservation Commission. Um. I'm a a civil engineer uh as my day job, so I do a lot of. Presentations and uh. You know, development projects for other towns and so sort of have a background knowledge of zoning and permitting and all that sort of stuff and uh yeah. You know, see myself in the town for. The long term, so I thought, you know, an opportunity to get involved in the planning board would be uh interesting and and rewarding. So uh an alternate role. Uh opened up and I I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring, so that's how I ended up here.
All right. Any questions for Jeff Black on the alternate position? Okay, all right, very good. And you have met with the planning board?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, great. All right, then I will entertain a motion. You want first? Uh let's let's take an app first. We'll vacate that before we.
Uh move to appoint Annette Garabedian to the planning board as a full member with terms starting July first, twenty twenty three. And expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And I'll take the next motion.
Yeah, move to appoint Jeffrey Black to the planning board as an alternate member. With a term starting July first, twenty twenty three, and expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
Thank you. All in favor, Chris?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you both. Uh I, we both have to get sworn in today's.
Yes.
Yeah, so you'll both need to get sworn in at Town Hall before beginning.
I will follow up with both.
Great, thank you. All right, uh next up we have, I believe the remainder for all the reappointments.
This should be their remainder. Um I'll double check. There might have been a couple that I didn't hear that round, but. Uh there were what we we got most of them.
Okay, great.
All right, Mr. Chair, some of these are like catchalls, like the school building committee is gonna go for a while, I suspect, you know, for however much longer. Part of the building committee, um there still might be some, it's not a hundred percent done, like we haven't let go of the contractor yet, so I'm reluctant to recommend that we discharge that committee. And then the the L E P C, um you can see that's uh stat, so we could, we can, that's.
Okay. Any questions on the reappointment list we have in front of us tonight? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to reappoint board and committee members as provided. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor, Chris?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Thank you, everybody on that list. And moving on to item nine, twelve Bancroft Street disposition. So I believe we have. Close, and this is to approve and really just mostly to acknowledge the. Um restrictions on the affordable units in perpetuity. And the trade or that is anything there?
No, that's it. I mean, but um because the, you know, already signed the paperwork, but this is somewhat of formality, but it's mostly the the procedure. To have the executive body sign for the local actions. You see your point is for the world housing portion of it, and then that gets submitted to. The executive office for housing, legal communities, formerly D H C D.
Any questions on this?
I just have one question on the memo uh that Rick wrote. Uh it's in the first paragraph that the the second. To lie this actually the last sentence. Is our understanding this is a requirement of the decision of the planning board through the site plan and special permit approval with waivers as pertaining to the project. So I just wanna make sure. That it is actually a requirement of the decision of the planning board.
The amount of horrible units?
Yes.
Like, yeah, yes, it was it was part of the special permit approved, like the amount of horrible units.
Okay.
So, okay, I'm sorry for my answer question.
No, it's just the the way it was written. I just wanna make sure it's clear that that it it the way he wrote it is it's our understanding that there's a requirement. So I wanna make sure there's no understanding. It's there is a requirement that.
Yeah, I think semantics, I think should probably phrase it.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that's all.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I will need to approve the local action unit LAU application for the. To the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly D H C D. For twelve Bancroft Street as submitted by Civic Development endorsed and endorsed by Mayor Affordable Housing Trust, authorizing use of digital signatures have approved.
Uh all in favor, Chris?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Very good. Uh we have three contracts in item ten. The first is a renewal with some updates on the M O A. Uh with maintenance of facilities and grounds uh between the school and the town department. Uh Greg, do you wanna give us an overview of any of the changes that we're looking at or maybe start with the overall?
Right, so for for the context, um this will be the second M O A. Of of this nature. So three years ago, after a Google town meeting to share some of the services between the two departments, be meaning. I'm collectively saying like the town departments, town hall, public works in particular, and uh school department and their facilities that. Um once I was approved to town meeting, then we we basically negotiated and executed this memorandum agreement between the two. So you'll see the agreement often first to the town or the schools. This this evolution after three years, uh I'll highlight some of the changes. Um I have it listed here, so I'm kind of reading word for word. Um there was a little bit of formatting change by town council. Uh and by the way, uh also as further context, this committee has already approved with the with this left where to see. Um anyways, so those changes are limited format. Um school department gets some additional responsibilities as far as like the fields and grounds that it's gonna be um responsible for. So. The additional are tennis courts, bleachers, basketball courts, track, overhead lane and sheds on the athletic field. Um as indicated on activity. Now the the school department um and Justin Marco with the Department of Public Works was collaborative in where they came up with the. Images. It's kind of like maps with an overlay of responsibilities. So those are updated and that's the. Going on, the school department shall serve as a permit issuer and authorize the use of barriers within its ownership. Uh that was important just to differentiate. There was some time that we would get questions. When we authorize the use of a of a field or athletic facility that falls under the school, so we just wanna clarify that that we don't do that. It's in the. The memorandum agree. Uh the town shall apply best management practices to achieve industry standards, agronomics techniques, and applicable and subject to budget preparation. So that's uh. That's the fields, that's the grass, on the grass. Uh you know, oftentimes in a contract, you try to negotiate like. The quality of the service and super well, this is saying that public works does it according to industry. Um and then here's the last one, copies of reports of inspections conducted by the building commissioner. Of vertical structures and facilities subject to official building codes shall be forwarded to the superintendent or his or her designate. This came up um in consideration of the bleachers. So uh there was a feeling that the alumni bleachers and their and their conditions and and how the building commissioner felt about it. That was not being so accurately shared in school department. So now we're just formalizing that that sharing of information. Hopefully that will come up regularly.
Any questions or comments in order?
Yes, um does the. Does the allowance to issue permits to the school department? Uh permit them to issue fees for those.
It should, I mean that's.
And if it does, those fees for the exclusive use of school department? Or are those fees general fund?
No, so uh. I believe it's for the use of the, I I'd have to double check on the accounting of it. That wouldn't be spelled out in this news, but um. They do, they do collect fees. And I believe it does go back to facilities, but I don't think it's revolved.
Yeah, that's okay. And then my other question is, do we know if they charge more? If the request is for the use of overhead lighting, for example, if there's an electric fee. Because we're giving the lights and have to turn them on and off. Is there an extra charge? Does it cost more to have a nighttime event than a daytime?
I couldn't speak to that either. Not sure. I don't think I look. But again, like in terms of use, like that's not, that's just not part. This is like a sharing of. Facilities made.
Yeah, I got it. I get it.
Yeah.
I do like the fact that that the uh. That the responsibilities, even though it's it's additional responsibilities, I feel like the responsibilities of the school department actually had. For the bleachers and the and the tennis courts and the basketball courts and things like that. So it's just clearer. It's it's just spelled out clearer. Um and I think any kind of subjectiveness that we can take away from these things, I think is really important. Um the only other thing is, and I'm I'm sure that. It basically comes down to working together, but you know, the the school department will serve as the permit issuer, which I understand. But then the town shall apply best management practices to to achieve the agronomics techniques. Well, sometimes playing on a field, sometimes you have to give the field a rest in order to allow it to grow. And and not overuse certain fields or or whatnot. So I'm assuming that there'll be some kind of collaboration there.
Uh I mean, it's, yeah, you're right. There's supposed to be a a shared understanding of the best use of the fields. Uh however, as you can, as you, as you know, it is a complicated relationship because the athletic director, my understanding, I might be, I might. Not be correcting this, but I believe the athletic director approves the use or not use of the field. According to athletic schedule, the program is used for probably in collaboration with the rest of superintendents, because I don't think like the graduation falls on the athletic director, but it's the use of the field. So then um and then there is supposed to be a communication with with the Department of Public Works, because it's our guys that load the field and maintain the field. So the athletic program, so our maintenance schedule is supposed to follow their use, but there's supposed to be communication to your point about. Okay, so use the every day of the week. Our guys aren't gonna be able to keep up and it's not gonna look great. So you you do have, there does have to be an understanding about the the.
Not only that, it's it's just Dean's point, it could be overused and therefore we could be. By having too much activity.
Yeah.
And not giving it a chance to rest.
So if that's not, I'm not, I mean, I don't, I don't recall that still that that relationship is spelled out in this understanding. Um but. I mean, that that is the understanding.
Excellent. It it doesn't have to be spelled out. It's just as long as it's the understanding. I just wanna make sure that it's.
Yeah. No, I I have a, I have a good amount of confidence that the athletic director, Justin DeMarco, that they're, you know, they are talking. I'm sure they have sometimes competing interests, but.
Any other questions on ten X? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreements as presented between the main school departments. Acting by and through with school committee in the town mayor acting by and through the blackboard for a term effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Until June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, and authorizing the town administrative bounds by what we have.
On favor, Chris? David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and school committee has already approved. Uh ten B, uh we have a contract with Sand Tech Consulting Services.
I'm ready to see it. Right, so the so the town um was. Fortunately, we're sitting at two hundred thousand dollars um from that's the need to do a. It's mostly ejected for the lead quantity in our in our service lines and our water lines, which is which is be very important. Um and so this is one of us, or our contract with Sand Tech, and Sand Tech has been on a long time. Of water engineering and services consultants. This is a free park, of course, but uh. I don't know, I'm still, I'm I'm really looking forward to it. So this is to use that that grant money, some of that dollars and get this, get this.
And this is the one that um Justin DeMarco was talking about at our last meeting, correct?
I I probably was, right. That felt very very, I think, yeah.
Any questions on this contract? You're a mute, Justine. You're good?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, there's no anticipation that the the town will have to kick in additional money beyond this two hundred grand, or is that not?
Not that I know.
Not guaranteed.
I'll double check the memo, but I don't please. Right, I don't need indication of that.
You know, we always hear about, oh, there's a, there's a. You know, what is, what do they refer to them as? So you know, not a possible run, but the uh. Whatever the term is that we hear all the time. Uh change. Change order that we need and, you know, so it's gonna only cost us a hundred and fifty thousand, but it's all a good part of the uh. That's already in our rates.
That's true, but then. As of right now, and I'm just reviewing the memo again, I don't see any indication that it's been the over for the granted word.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services Inc. for water service inventory and assessment. In the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, authorizing use of digital signature that could prove.
All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Uh one more item under ten ten C, which is a V H B in general engineering consulting service contract extension.
Right, so Mrs. Chair, the V H B is our on call engineer. We refer to this tenant here, and they've been for a long time in the town. So. Recurring law actually doesn't require you to have to do a recurring procedure to acquire this particular service that falls under public boards, which is present. Um but it is good practice through the time time. So their, so their contract is inspiring in this this period of ten days. Um and we do have an R P out there. I've got a lot of hits for it, but I also wanna clarify that this this town engineer. Um contract is separate from another contract, which I'm also preparing for, which is uh engineering view for the planning board. Right, so we do have the H B serving locals right now. Um but there's been indication that we're looking for an alternate to the planning board's engineer view, so we're doing that right now. So I don't, I don't know who's gonna be the final contractor for either of these services. Oh, and then actually the third. Their computers process we have out right now is for conservation commissions uh review. So I could potentially have many, many contracts, because those other, those other two reviewing services for the planning board conservation, it doesn't, you don't have to take just one. You got, you know, like a stable of of uh designer reviewers or engineer reviewers, but this contract is to. Further extend V H V's current uh on call engineering consultant services. I I wrote August thirty first, uh but I don't expect to take that long. The deadline for submissions for this R P is the end of the month. Um and so it's a quick turnaround, which maybe I could get it to board by July, but but that's it, of course.
All right. Any questions on Tennessee?
I'll move to approve the extension of Benas Hangan Burson Inc., also known as V H P. For on call engineering consulting services for a term ending August thirty first, twenty twenty three, as presented. Authorizing use of digital signatures that approved.
All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, very good, that concludes item ten, move on to item eleven. Uh, which is a request for an extension of the lease from Art Space Maynard of sixty one sixty three Summer Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you real quick introduce yourself again and then uh, go over the request and brief?
Okay, um, I am Succi Monford, legally known as Succi from Monford, I'm a resident of Duncible Institutions, and I'm the executive director of Art Space Maynard. And um, try to elaborate on this request.
Please do.
Yeah, um, this request is, it's a request for a one-month extension of occupancy um, at sixty three summers. Sixty three summer three for art space and our artists. Um, and then this is involving the original request that was sent to us in December, asking us to uh, be out of the building by June thirtieth. And we're requesting one more month.
Okay, and how is the status of the move up going?
Um, it's, it's good, the status is good. Um, I came onboard in January and um, so. And in December, Art Space confirmed that they could not stay in the building any longer. Um, and so when I came onboard in January, my first um, task was to mobilize moving out efforts. Um, so I'll speak to the moving out and then I'll speak to the move that we are crossing our favorite for. Um, move, so. Our space, um, the top, the second floor, the second wing, west wing. Is is not occupied, so those tenants weren't there. Um, and as, and since I've been there. Um, you know, fifteen studios are now completely cleared out and our artists have moved their things out. And then the remaining studios are all reworked on. We had a yard sale for two months and it was successful and helping move out a lot of things in the building. Um, you know, our furniture and our items that were going to be sellable for our artists. Um, all of the artists are working really hard to back box up their studios. Many of them are making plans to relocate their studios, some are hoping to just move with us to our next location. Um, and are just waiting, you know, holding pattern, but their items are being boxed up. As of now, everybody expects to be, every, as of now, their understanding is that we have to be out by June thirtieth. And by app, and that was because we also signed a letter of intent. For a new location, we were gonna move our our art space to a new location. Um, the space that we are hoping to sign is um, eleven Main Street, which I think. Also goes by twenty one Main Street, is the second floor where Emerson Medical is right now, formerly known as the Walgreens. Um, that was six weeks ago that we signed that letter of intent and we have not received a lease yet. Um, we are about to, we are, our realtor is now talking to the owner of the building themselves. As opposed to Walgreens, so. If I, do I continue to elaborate here? If there's a delay in us moving, if there's a delay that has gained a lease. And we would like to stay in sixty three Main, sixty three Summer to allow our artists to leave their items in boxes in their studios. And uh, for us to have this work for our good staff.
Any questions from the board? Um, is there a chance we'll need to renew again for another month, I think?
There is a chance, but I would um, like to not visit that yet, and we are hoping. That we only need one more month, because each month that we stay, we incur, you know, bills, utility bills for responsible for. Electricity, which is quite high.
There are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't think I wrote.
Oh, there is no motion. Um, so do we need?
Oh, you, you, you're very smart.
What's that?
Yeah, go, we're gonna make one up.
All right.
So um. Sure, um. Move to approve, mention the art space, art expectancy, July thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the new lease. All right, moving on to item twelve, uh, update from the Green Meadow School Building Project. Chris or?
Um, the last meeting, they did a, they voted, you may vote into. Both the view of the board and they also won. You know, they finished, I mean, they wrapped up the survey, so the survey results are on the website and also. Um, which we're getting at, it's members of the committee now to contribute a bill with the public on the website as well, is a. Recap of the um, spending of the um. What is the, the um.
Recap of the spending, it's like the piece of ability.
Yeah, 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 the recap of the kind of people build, yeah. Peaceability with escaping me, but yeah.
Yeah.
On online on the um, on the website for this, we're building, I mean, it's. The uh, camera recap of the um, spending of the, I think it's only about forty six, forty seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah. Uh, right, but it's playing, it's it's doing it part, it's meant to get us this far in the process and we're moving along. There's a, there's a meeting with the N F D A tomorrow, uh, with the board directors. Um, which I maybe attend, but either way, I think it's pretty procedural at this point, I think we'll continue to inform the N S D A about this evolution, in this case. This geothermal. I don't know if the board recalls or if the public general, there, there was like, there was like that big slideshow, the kind of show like the three options about heating, so there was like. Diesel, geothermal, and then uh, air, he he bomb. Um, and then there's a lot of back and forth about like the initial costs versus long-term costs and potential rebates and taxes sentence and. And it's a lot, so um, after all that, and particularly after the input as person of this public survey, as well as. I would say some influence from from the town meeting uh, about the position, um, which was only a recommendation to this like work, but. So non-binding, but it was a recommendation to have a. I might get drawn, but I think it was a net zero carbon. Um, anyway, all that was sort of like, technicalized and and considered by the, by the school building, they moved in the direction of the geothermal. Um, but we already thought it out, how much that was gonna be, and reveal all costs, tax barriers, etc. So it was just a matter of. So I think there was. Atypical, this job's such old.
True.
But um. So I, I don't know when the next.
I mean, we hadn't said on the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, but, but it was, I, I don't know if you just, Chris, I apologize, but then there was the, the understanding that. Uh, now, sort of like the focus of the building committee was gonna be on that, like getting, getting sure, make sure people know that. This is on the horizon, we already have a set date for, I mean, the board hasn't approved this date, but. We have penciled in the special time meeting in October, followed by the. Vote, because it takes two actions in November, so. And I think the better in the school committee, really understood like, okay, now's the time, you gotta, you gotta hit the streets.
In the, in that conversation, I was very surprised that we here. To me, anyway, surprisingly, low numbers of people that that group. Being that if consultant, um, the deck group believed that people in town were aware of. Oh, like they, they, their suggestion was the surprisingly high number of people in town aren't even aware that this. Discussion taking place, that, you know, will be needing to take a place in the, there's a, a mental debt or. It's a funding for.
Well, I can, I'm not quite sure at all.
So, a, a big part of the conversation after the voting was um, getting the information out to everybody that's interested. And um, and everybody in town in general, the suggestion by a couple of people involved. Based on their um, past experiences, it's a, it's a very low percentage of voters. That are aware that this conversation is even taking place, conversation for a need for a new school or a desire for a new school, however anybody wants to get, they're just saying. You'd be surprised at how many people don't even know this conversation is taking place, they won't know till they see it on a special time meeting warrant or something else to later date. Which I just thought was kind of interesting, but. So they're, they're taking, they're taking the um, task on, creating all the um, you know, along with some of the people in them. Um, you know, the superintendent's office to create all the um, information that's gonna be disseminated. On behalf of the school building committee, the consultants in the school. Yeah, you say that that could break the, yes, that, and they're gonna, you know, whether it's public, you know, visiting stations or. Also to, you know, any number of things.
They've, they've been, they've been through this procedure so many times and kind of, they've seen that.
Yes. Well, but the numbers that they suggested, the people were completely unaware, were very surprising as well.
Well, I think, I honestly, I think that the. I think that there's a certain amount of people that assume that they get all of their news, people, at this point, we get all our news from Facebook. Or social media or something, so if you have a good contingent of people who aren't. Either on social media or aren't on the right pages or whatever. You know, unfortunately, we don't have a newspaper, so how how do you get that word out? The way it needs to be, like, I mean, could you do like a flyer? I know, again, it doesn't go to everybody, maybe, again, we pay for it to go to everybody. But like a flyer in the action unlimited again, or, you know, like an actual piece of paper flyer, or I, I don't know, an ad or or something.
So you, you can do that, but I, I, I did advise the, those, those members of the. Uh, advocacy team, so I mean, I'm not sure of this, that um, can't use town funds for. So even though this is like Republican Democrat, definitely think this is a, you're asking for people to vote a certain way. So you can't, like, we can't use this printer here, but they can, but they can print their own flyers.
Right, right, right.
Can't use town funds.
That's it.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember, I actually remember that from last, from the high school as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, but I, which I suspect it will do, I think that, like, that's always a great idea, like the one, one major.
Go ahead, Mike.
My experience, you've been animated, um, you say that the, the flyers are not allowed to be used for promoting the position. Can, can the town phone a flyer which is purely informative in the sense that this event is coming up? Not necessarily presenting a position.
We do that already through the warrants, and you know, until the, on the warrant, looks in with it, with emotion, you know, borrowing opposition, etc. Um, I do that in my T A reports, in my um. In my contribution to the senior newsletter, I think, by the way, there's, there is a school building committee, so talking about this. You don't be surprised if you need something being added to you at the town meeting. Um, but as long as you kind of like, aware that you can't, you can't sort of like persuade either way about how they vote. But you can, it's a statement of fact, if you're saying like, this select board has this, this as the town meeting day.
Right, because it's, it's good said, and I, I concur, I think there's a lot of people, and we just don't know anything on the side of this guy. Just to let them know that it, that it's, yeah.
I want to point people towards the website, like that's, I think that's the easy thing to do, just get people on the website.
I think we miss a big opportunity, W A V M does nothing relative to advertising. You know, like, they could put up something on, um.
Well.
I don't know who has for the summer. Um, but you know, you watch other towns and their, their local access television has a heck of a lot of stuff on there about what's going on in their community. Ours doesn't.
Might be something to bring up to them, you know, as opposed to just saying it here, you know, I, I don't know, have we ever approached them to do that?
I just made a note, so I can shoot them, I mean, they're, the kids are at school, but oh, I, I shot them an email, I mean, I will, oh, um, yeah.
Kind of merging all be together, what is the building committee's plan for this advocacy?
Uh, Chris, you want to speak to that? I'm not sure.
I'll, I'll, that'll probably come out at the next meeting, yeah, they were, I think, I think there was the Jerry, the chair. Uh, Mary Brantley, and then Phil, and um, yeah, Phil Plumb, and then Chris, yeah, from the, from the consultants. They were gonna get together as a smaller committee and get, you get that moving, and then that, once they, once they set. The next meeting, you know, that will be, I, I imagine that will be on the agenda, because other than a recap of whatever. Happens at the meeting tomorrow with the M S B A, there's not, there's not a lot of other. Between now and then, and they hadn't set a meeting because they, they, two or three meeting dates that they set, there were uh. Several people, you know, um, that had conflicts, and you know, several, several people kind of were settled for the uh, meeting process. From the pump and belt and um. They're just kind of waiting to find out when, when they can work out a date to meet, and then we'll know. Pauline will send it out, you know, what you guys know when that is, but um, the specifics of their plan is gonna, you know, will be probably shared at that meeting. They, they just, you know, the last meeting, they talked kind of in. Um, vagaries as to what they've done in other campaigns, other communities, for other schools, and they were gonna. You know, share some of that information with Mary and Jerry, those guys, determine everybody. Work best here and then, you know, they're, they're ready to go with it, so. It's not a matter of, you know, they have the information, they're ready to put it out, it's just a matter of what gets approved to go.
The doctor, they're ready to go with what?
Whatever information they're gonna share, whatever, you know, I mean, because clearly that group is gonna, that group is going to advocate for, you know, for yes vote. That, you know, um, so they, whatever information that the, you know, building me. And the consultants consider is, you know, um, favorable to, yes, what they're gonna create that propaganda and share.
Okay, but no, no defined schedule on how that's gonna.
There's not, there is not any good schedule at all, I have not seen any schedule.
I don't.
They haven't even stopped, like, they literally have not established from the next meeting date is because of the conflicts within their small group. Yeah, so, you know, so once, once that meeting is done, I'll, you know, I'll put that question up. And then note to Jerry and ask him, Jerry, you know, what's. When is he think that stuff is gonna take place, because he's the chair of that committee, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the Green Meadow School Building Project? All right, thank you, Chris. Uh, item thirteen correspondence, we have one correspondence from Auras, which is the water quality report, which we've seen before. Uh, and letter.
Move to accept and approve correspondence A is shown, and I assume the use of digital signatures is approved.
Back it. Any comments on the one correspondence item? Uh, then, uh, motion is made in seconded, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
I'm yes as well. I'm fourteen minutes, we have one set of minutes for June sixth. Any question on the minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty three, as shown.
Can we add, can, can we add authorizing use of digital signature if approved?
Yeah.
You wish.
The motion is, yes, go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty three, as shown, and. To approve the use of digital signatures approved.
Can I get a second? Very good, uh, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Uh, town administrator report.
So uh, I apologize to the board of the public, I see that I voted the wrong date of my T A report, and I, and I did write, I feel like the, the kid who's. You know, dogged, I really did do the, the T A report for June twentieth. Um, I think this is the first time I might have misspoke that I've ever made this error, but I uh, I did do it. Um, does it good, Greg, Greg cannot have had an agreement. Uh, on that June twentieth T A report, I highlighted a couple of things. Um. We were closed yesterday for June nineteenth, we will be closed again, town office for July fourth, which is in a couple of weeks. Uh, Bill Mather, the planning director, and I did meet with directors and executives of Mill and Bane, we met with the Lincoln Management and um. Artists, uh, who are the owner of Mill and Bane, just to sort of like explore very, how you live, and. Uh, see where they are, they really, they didn't have any proposals for us, I suppose, you know, considering where they are, occupancy, expansion, other digits, they didn't have anything. But I was grateful that they were, um, willing to connect with Bill and I, and we, we like to say, Millman always has to be at the table, the town manager, so. We're ready to use you. Your backseat, go ahead.
I have a question. Town, town hall open July third.
Monday?
Yes. I might, well, hold on now.
That on the real?
I'm working July third.
Let me think about it. Put me on the spot.
All right, it's just a question, like, because I'm looking at the gap. Alright, it's just a question, like, because I'm looking at the government.
Yeah, yeah. I get it, I get it, I get it.
And I, I will also point out that the town administrator report is actually already online. At the website, so you can find it under town administrator reports for June.
Thank you, I clicked on the wrong paper, but actually, yeah, you're right, thank you. Um. Hey, I attended the eighth grade graduation this morning, or at least half of it, um, took a while, there was a lot of reward, it was great, um. So I was glad to be part of it, I finally took up superintendent Brian Austin's invitation, he invited me to almost everything, and this is, I finally showed up, so. Uh, it was, it was great, it was a little opportunity. And then, uh, it was indoors, it wasn't out in the long night field, just in case it was gonna rain. And then, the library board of trustees approved their strategic plan for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight, so I encourage the public to look at that, that. That's wonderful, uh, it's a long time coming, they put a lot of effort into the library staff, uh, team guard, the director, and the board trustees. So, um, check out their strategic plan. Um. It's not on Word doc, so you can't see the picture, but there's a picture of, of myself and some staff and, uh. And some consultants as well as Select, S O L E P T, they're the name of the vendor. Um, that we're contracting with, put up solar panel at the high school, and we met at the high school, um. With them in front of, in front of the high school in particular, because the proposals to put up the solar way over the parking spot. So that's great, and it was actually the first time I've seen Beth Green, but our consultant in years, in, in, in the flesh. Uh, but it was real good progress, so this is myself and Bill Nester and Chris Arson from the planning works there.
Now, is that why there's a public hearing for the high school? Uh, there's like a site plan change, I saw that posted the other day.
By any word?
Yeah.
That's probably the case, yes.
Okay, it, it said it was, it was sponsored by Select, so I just wanted to.
So they considered it a major modification as opposed to a minor, so that probably triggered the, the.
Okay.
We could ask, and then, okay, she does, yeah, good, okay, and then, uh. Uh, there'll be the point that, that's the board again, but, uh, there's a lot of progress on the well for water treatment plant. Uh, some stand deck in particular, they, they take the, they take the notes and the reports for those, uh, lot, lot of work you've done there before, so it's. I think that's it, Mr. Chair, unless there's questions in the board.
Any questions on the T A report?
No.
Alright, uh, moving on to the chair report, uh, I had the opportunity to attend the Middlesex West Chamber of Commerce annual gala, which was held at Sanctuary. I think it's the first time they've, uh, had it, um, not just at that venue in Maynard, so it's great to see. Uh, a lot of people from those businesses outside of town come in town and, and see what we have to offer, and there are a good number of, uh. Maynard restaurants, uh, representing there as well, and two award winners from Maynard, uh, Will Doyle. Uh, for the community builder of the year, and then Amanda Hem and the Maynard Educational Foundation for Nonprofit of the Year, so great. Not only to have that event in Maynard, but to see two, uh, people who are really contributing to the community, uh, get recognized for all their hard work. So congratulations to both of them. Uh, I was able to attend the sixty one sixty three summer street reuse committee, they had a meeting, uh, in the library. Uh, an open session invited all the abutters in particular, but also opened to the public. Uh, for ideas about, um, future use of the building, and so they had a, a very well organized system where, uh, people could go in. And they had a, kind of preset ideas, and you could write on your sticky note what your ideas were and stick them up, or ask questions. They had a board for new ideas, a board for questions, things like that, so, uh, I believe they were able to capture a lot of information in a relatively short period of time. And it was a, a well-run forum by that committee, or, or ask for, so, um, looking forward to see the summarization of, of those results. And then I was also able to attend Jazz Fest this weekend, which I think was, uh, a great success, I know they had to move, uh, last minute for the rain date. And I think, uh, um, uh, from what I saw, it was, uh, energetic, uh, in every way you want it to be, uh, occasion. A lot of people were there, I think Representative Hogan was there as well, uh, and so congratulations, I see Armin is here, uh, not only to you, but you're in higher team. But that. And Linda, yes, and everybody involved, absolutely, and you're getting a lot of praise tonight. Uh, so, well done for Jazz Fest, and, and I hope we, we continue to build upon that success, and, uh, hopefully the, the weather. And Jenna as well, good to see you, Jenna, and, and thank you. So I know a lot of, a lot of people, um, really worked to make that happen, and I think it was a tremendous success, so well done. And that is it for me, uh, we'll go on to board member reports with Chris.
Yeah, just, um, well, not quick public service, if you will, um, I've had four or five people ask me. They have to be a member to shop at the co-op, and you, you do not have to be a member to shop at the co-op. And it's, actually, one was in town hall, and I got my trash stick, it's someone asking. There's no, what, writing? So anyway, so that was it, that's all I have, alright.
David? Thank you, um, the, uh, we could go tonight, the, might have been last, uh, tomorrow night, uh, but the. Port of a housing trust met, um, and one of the exciting things Greg mentioned earlier, uh, today, that we turned the keys over. To the, uh, as it's now known as, the Coolidge. Um, so, we no longer own the, uh, Coolidge School.
Yeah.
It's now owned by the Coolidge, um, but, uh, very exciting stuff, and we sort of. Um, reminisced at that meeting about, um, how much effort we had put in as a trust to, uh, assure that. We got not only a, uh, affordable unit, but a reduced rate affordable unit, and took some time. What's that? Took some time, took some effort, and it took some cooperation on the part of, uh, the Coolidge and the developers. Um, to, to work it through, and so, very exciting stuff, they should begin, uh, working on that, I would imagine sometime in the, uh. In the fall, if not sooner.
Absolutely.
Um, so anyway, the other issue that we talked about was, just so people are aware of what the housing trust is working on, the. Rental assistance program went into effect, and. We are able, we are as of, right now, as of June first, we are actually helping four families here in Maynard to, uh. Uh, with their rent, and to help them stay in Maynard, um, as I think I, uh, let. Everyone know, there were more people that applied, we had to have a lottery, uh, so. The, the need and the desire is real here in Maynard, the cost for people to. Stay in Maynard is increasingly making it difficult. But the housing trust is doing its best to, uh, sit with that. Um, just from demographics, uh, can't get into specifics, but, uh. Three of the four are single person adults, two are elderly, one, or, or disabled. Um, there's one single adult, two minor children, that, uh, are being assisted through this program through the lottery. The other issue that we discussed is, uh, the trust is considering or contemplating. A grant to also, uh, pursue an affordable unit beyond what we can get, if any, at the. Dollar station project, I mean, the fire station project, uh, to see if we can get another affordable unit out of that. But that would require us to seek a grant and get some, do some work, so it's gonna take some, some effort. Um, on the lines of the, uh, Affordable Trust, and I say this. I, I enjoy my role on that, on that committee, but I also realize that there are others on this committee that are on, on our board. That are interested in affordable housing issues, so, um, my term is up. I'm not looking to be not appointed, but I'm looking to offer it to others who might want to have the opportunity to participate. And see what else Maynard does. So, um, when we come together as a group of five, I wanted to, I spoke specifically, I know Mike has an interest in affordable housing. I know Jeff has an interest in affordable housing, and I'm sure the others do, uh, I just want to make sure that when it's time to reappoint. I'm all for it if I get reappointed, but I also don't want it to feel that people, other people don't have the opportunity to participate, because it's critically important. Group, and, uh, it's an opportunity to learn a little bit about some of the needs here in town, so. When we talk about it, don't be offended if somebody wants to say, I'm interested in joining, uh. Not gonna be, uh, it's not gonna offend me at all, because I think that's, and I, I prep the group that way, I told them that, you know, I'm welcome to come back, but. But I know that there are others that are, uh, interested. Lastly, I wanted to take this opportunity, I don't usually, or we don't usually do this, um. In this factor, but I think in this, in this instance, it's important to recognize, July one, um. Two longstanding members, important members of the finance committee are going to be leaving. And, uh, I think they deserve our thanks and, uh, respect from all of us. Uh, Alon Augustus, in the current chair, is stepping down, and Ken Estherbrook, longtime member of the finance committee. Is also stepping down July one, um, they're going to have, it's gonna be big shoes to fill for both of them. Um, they're both advocates for Maynard, advocates for, you know, whatever side of the argument they may be on. They're advocates for it, and, uh, I think we need to extend our appreciation, um, as a board and as a community to both Ken and Alana. Um, uh, they've completed their terms, and, uh, they walk away with their heads held high, as they should, and that's it for me.
Be very good.
If we, if we go to Justine, can I interrupt? What did you go?
I had not, go ahead.
Um, to David's point, as far as committee shifts and all type of things go. Could you send out the, uh, list of like the committee shifts and the liaison, the head of the July fifth? And include, include, um, our newest member, Mr. Steven, in case he has anything he wants to dump on. Or in case anybody has anything they want to call to him. But anyways, it would be, it would be nice to have it in advance, so that we're not, as we usually are kind of.
Yeah.
You know, kicking around that night, just in case.
Justine, Justine might be thinking about that clerkship.
Because it's been going so stellar.
We know. It usually goes to our newest member.
Well, yeah, if we could get those up front, that would be great, so, you know, everyone can look and see what they're aligned with, and maybe you want to make some changes, yeah. There's a lot of, yeah.
Yes. Uh, very good, and I'll just note, just a minor thing, but I think the Coolidge School will be known as the Calvin.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nice play on the name, the Calvin.
The Cal.
And Calvin Coolidge.
Yeah. It's called the Calvin, and I knew that, and I screwed it up.
You've been explaining that for a while.
You know. Give me an important announcement to make.
You got the important part.
We have to know all the presidents and all the state capitals.
I don't, I remember capitals, I don't know.
No.
Yes. Yes, well, that might have been Boy Scouts. Was it, the, the presidents?
Well, that was the song that was out where you could do it, but now with some of the new, the new names, you can't fit them in. There was a song, and it all flowed, but with some of the new ones, it, it's not possible with presidents, that is.
Justine, are you ready to give your chair report, or your board member report?
My chair report? Yeah, no, kidding, um, no, uh, actually, I have nothing to report tonight.
Alright, okay.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, very good, our next meeting would normally fall on, what is the fourth of July, so our next meeting will be the fifth of July, uh, just for everybody. Awareness, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.